Okay. Tuesday, March 27, 2018. Town of Monroe zoning Board of Appeals. At the senior center, 101 Mine Road, Monroe York 10950, 7:30. Number one on the, we are going to make a roll call.
Abe?
Here.
Jonas?
Here.
Joseph is absent. Robert?
Here.
Seth?
Here.
And Michael is not here. Thank you.
Okay, we're gonna rise for the pledge allegiance.
The pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Okay, we have, in the back, the fire exits. One exit here on this side, to my left. Case of emergency. Number two, we're gonna do a public hearing for 55 Seven Springs Road, Z-025-2018, and section block lot 1-1-11.22. Okay, so we'll take, okay. We'll take the next one, J Squared Edwards, Z-16-015, section block lot 13-9-13 and 14. Let's just go over what we were talking at the last, where we ended the last meeting. First thing we're gonna do, the fire, the fire chief, the letter, we received the letter. It states, "Please find below response from the fire department regarding the application for 288 variants for J Squared Buildings Incorporated." After review of the plans and looking at the area of interest, 297 Mountain Avenue, 13-9-13 and 295 Mountain Avenue, 13-9-14, the fire department has no issues in operation in those areas in case of fire. The department apparatus will have no issue accessing the area, this area. Any question, please email me at J Squared, or me at 742-8943. Okay. That means the chief has seen the area and he's satisfied, so we're gonna accept this letter for the record. Any questions, board members, about this letter?
Yeah, I mean, I guess just add to that, because it was, I'm not sure what changed between this letter and the original. I think maybe the part about the apparatus.
Mm-hmm. Last two lines.
Right? So when we received this, I reached out to John directly on the email, asking for clarification, you know, that he specifically physically located the property. You know, the exact email was, "Thank you for the attached letter. Were you able to physically look at the property in question in addition to reviewing the plans?" And his response was yes.
Okay. So we will accept this letter that the fire truck could get around safely to that particular area, to that parcel?
Yep.
That's not an issue. And then we had another issue with the letter from the county. The county has answered the local determination, so that's fine too.
Yep.
Any other question about this? Any other question?
No.
That was the only issue.
Yeah, those are the two outstanding issues, right? We were waiting the letter from the county and clarification on the letter from the fire department.
And you wanted sets of plans, which I provided for.
Yes.
Right, and the record should reflect that before the board, our set of plans looks like last dated March 2, 2016, and it sheets one through four.
Any changes from before that we should look at?
The only thing that we...
Yeah, if I could ask you guys to just take a look at all four sheets and make sure what the last revision is on each individual sheet, because each individual sheet will have its own revision date. Just to be clear for the record, that's all. I think there might be one or two sheets inside that might have a different revision date on it.
It looks similar to the four that I have. None of them have a revision date. They all just have the original date down in the lower right, and the revision box on each of the fours blank.
Okay, that's fine then.
Well, March 2, 2016. Did you have revisions that you wanted to...
No, if that's what you have before you, that's fine.
I guess the question was, were there any additional changes made after this was reviewed?
No, there's really nothing additional from what you see on those sheets. Essentially, there's the driveway turnaround on one of the lots. There is an existing easement plan shown on one of the sheets. That was one of the other conditions the board was concerned about. We can record that with the deeds. I think that's pretty much about it. That's what I have in my notes.
I only heard the last back, the last bit of that. You were talking about the easements, like cross easements over the two properties?
Yeah, correct, yeah.
Did we discuss with the road maintenance agreement?
I believe we did. And what we had discussed with the board was that we have contacted the neighbors. The neighbors have a verbal agreement that's in place, and essentially, they want to keep it that way, is our understanding. So we'll construct a new portion of the road, be responsible for that maintenance and ease of that additional road that's installed between the lots that are actually built upon. And that's how we proceed.
Okay. Anything else?
And just, I know, I'm sure we talked about it last time, but maybe this is what you're alluding to. So how do we, how is it that the turnarounds and everything will stay the way they are? You know, like, somebody buys a house, somebody sells it.
Correct.
That, you know, they can't rip up the driveway and, you know, so they can't have the turnaround.
If you take a look at sheet, I think it's three, you'll see at the top of the sheet, easements for both sewage disposal, and there's an easement also for the fire truck turning diagram. And if you take a look at the note, it says, "Temporary turnaround easement to be extinguished when private road is looped or a subsequent turnaround provided. The construction of the turnaround shall be in accordance with the proposed driveway detail." There's actually meets and bounds associated with that easement there, and that will be recorded with a deed to that property.
Where is that note exactly?
If you take a look on sheet three, the fire truck turning diagram, which is the upper left-hand corner of the... You'll see there's meets and bounds associated with that note for an easement there, so that that easement is existent perpetuity until that road should ever be extended somehow, or a proper turnaround is constructed at the end of the road, at which time then that easement could be extinguished. Those were the, that's the exact language we actually used on the Catskill Avenue side also. And that's exactly how we approached it for that variance we obtained there.
Anybody in the public that would like to speak about this matter? No? Okay. I'll make a motion to close the public hearing.
A second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Okay. I'll make a motion to declare as a type-two action, and secret is not required.
Second.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Okay. Now, we'll do the five. Number one, whether an undesirable change will be produced in the character of the neighborhood or a determinant of nearby properties will be created by granting the area variance?
No.
No.
No. Number two, whether the benefit sought by the applicant can be achieved in some method feasible for the applicant to pursue other than an area variance?
No.
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 No. I guess it's not an area, it's a 288 variance.
It's a 288, but it's the same standard supply.
Okay. Number three, whether the requested variance is substantial?
What would we compare that to?
In regard to a section 288 variance, it's a little bit more of a difficult factor to apply. And I think it could mean, it's within your discretion how to apply that in these circumstances. For example, if, one way to view that would be, let's say the applicant was looking for approval for 35 lots on the end of a small street. You know, one might say, well, that's substantial. That's one way to view the word substantial in this context.
This is substantial because it's only for two houses, so you mean it should be feasible?
Yeah, I mean, well, that particular factor should be governed by the words, you know, is it substantial? And again, substantial is in the eye of the beholder, and you can apply it pursuant to what your judgment says is substantial or is not, as long as it's rational.
It's to accommodate two lots, so I would personally say that it's not substantial in answering that.
I'd agree.
But the variance is needed in order to get to that lot.
Right.
Without getting the variance, they won't be able to access that lot, right? In order to build a house, they need the variance to get to it.
Right, but that, this is just one factor in determining that larger issue. One of the factors is, is it substantial, or is it, you know, what we call de minimis or small? That's not determinative of the issue, but it's a factor that you have to consider. If it's very substantial, that's a factor that would lean towards a denial. If it's not substantial, that factor would lean towards a grant, but not required in either event.
Okay, could we go on to the next question? Are we ready for the next one?
Yep.
Number four, whether the proposed variance will have an adverse effect or impact to the physical or environmental condition in the neighborhood or the district?
No.
No. Number five, whether the difficulty was self-created?
Yes.
Yes, it was self-created. Okay, in order that we find all of these questions, we're gonna vote for the...
If you do make a motion to approve it, whoever makes the motion, it will be my advice to, if you have any conditions, to embed that within your motion. For example, if one of the conditions, if the motion is to grant the variance requested, on the condition that, you should put the, you should say that in your motion, and the condition, for example, might be, "Subject to submission of the appropriate easements." You know, I can memorialize that in a resolution tomorrow in a more wordy way, but, you know, that sort of thing. Anytime you're gonna make a vote to approve a variance, if in fact that's what you're gonna do, embed that condition within it if you can.
Okay. I'll make a motion to approve the variance with the condition of the easement, the easement for the fire truck to be able to turn around, and the other easement that was about the garbage, you said? Need another easement on that, right?
The only two easements that we have are for the fire truck turnaround and the sewage easements for the Mudina Sewer Commission. Those are the only two.
Okay. So those easements, with that condition of the easements to be stated on the variance?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
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 Aye. Okay. The variance is granted.
Thank you very much for your time tonight.
Okay, next. Next item on the agenda is gonna be 55 Seven Springs Road, Z-025-2018, section block lot 1-1-11.22. Okay.
Grievenem, my name is Joel Mann. I'm here behalf of the applicant. I was there last month and gave the presentation and the request why the variance is needed. I will go over briefly.
Excuse me. Jonas, you need to open the public hearing.
I'll make a motion to open the public hearing for this matter.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Thank you.
Do we have the mailings?
Yep. Mailings went out, four came back, nine are still outstanding. But I have proof that they were all mailed.
I gave you the receipt.
Yep, I have everything. Actually, I don't know whether they came with me tonight, they might be in there. Nope, they're here.
Okay.
So there's still some waiting to come back. They mailed them out on the 16th, which was in plenty of time.
Okay. Okay, Mr. Mann, let's see what we have tonight.
Okay, so this property, as discussed last month, is in, originally, it was years back, it was, it's originally in the R1 district, and it was changed then to the SR3, and then now it's SR10. Now, we were here before the zoning board in 2016, the beginning of 2016, with an application. The application was actually for a single family with an accessory at that time, and the lot was confirmed with the, the lot size was conforming, the setbacks was not conforming, and that was the reason of the denial by the building inspector. We were here for like two months, answered all the questions. It was just like a small clarification waiting from the attorney before we, the next month, the moratorium was already in effect, and we got stuck two years with this plan. After that, the zoning has been changed in that area, and it went from, and changed to SR10. Now, the setbacks are conforming, and there's two other problems that we face there. Is the lot size, and as I explained last month, that all the lots, I would say it's not all, but it's 90% of the lots in this area were subdivided, and were, the size is 40,000 square feet, and it's not, the required now is one acre, what is 43,560, but in fact, most of the properties are exactly 40,000 square feet, what is less than the required from the bulk table as of now. So it got by itself a non-conforming lot. So everything needs to come to the planning board, to the zoning board. The next issue is that the lot coverage was changed from 40% to 15%. So we had in our application proposed 86.6%. This was confirming in our original application. Now it's non-conforming. At the last meeting, some board members has raised a concern about the drainage on this property and the lot coverage. Even explained that originally, it was confirming at the time when we planned this construction, but they wanted, they sent, I believe they sent, they made a request that it should be reviewed by the town engineer, Mark Etzel. I know, when I got the information today, that till now, I didn't have a chance to review that, and didn't have a chance to comment on it. Now, it's for us, it's every day counts. And I'm here to offer for the board, and actually, I have updated revised plans to remove some items, so it will, I will bring down the lot coverage from 86.6% to with a total of 9.2%. So it will be a total proposed 27% lot coverage. And in fact, as discussed, the allowable in this district, when there is sewer, is 25%. So in fact, there is possible, this lot actually is far away from a sewer, but it's possible to have lots in that area covered 25% even with the current zoning, and we're talking from 27%. The other fact is that other houses in that neighborhood, I would say like 40%, 85%, 40%, there is single family with, there is single family with accessory houses. We know it's not allowed anymore in this zoning. We're allowed actually to do, in fact, we can go for a subdivision and do like probably three units on this lot, but this is not what the owner wants to do. He wants just to stay as a single-family house, and it should be comfortable and designed, that the intent was for two years ago. So I would like to ask the board to consider that and try to act on this tonight, so we can move on with the construction.
Do you have a copy for us?
Yes, I have copies, signed and sealed copies.
So where were the, you mentioned the reduction in lot coverage. Where was that taken up?
We have removed the existing driveway on the right side of the existing part, portion of the house.
Okay.
Then we removed the concrete patio in the front of the existing portion of the house, because in fact, it's definitely not the, we would try to avoid that because of cost effectiveness, but, and the comfortability, but if this makes the difference, we decided to remove it. We have in the back, in the rear of the house, you have like the walkways connecting the things. This is not necessary anymore. In fact, it wasn't even used. They're walking on the grass if they want access to the pool. And it's, the whole use, if you see the walkways connecting to the existing driveway, the driveway is no more there, so it's not needed anymore. So that basically changed the number to a reduction of 9%. So 9.2%, so the total proposed is now altogether 27%, including the existing portion of the house, the proposed addition, the new proposed driveway, the stairs, the entry, and the pool. That's one of our problems, that we don't, we have the pool, that part of the lot coverage, that it's not only the house, it's the pool. We have like a concrete deck for safety around the pool with a fence around it. So everything is included in that 27%.
Okay, so everything that says to be removed, that stuff that was...
Correct.
Compared to last month?
Yes.
Let's take it off, okay.
Yep.
That also concerned what we want the engineer to review, right?
Martin's out of town.
Now...
The issue on the, for the engineer, I think that came up at the last meeting, if I'm not mistaken, is the distance between the leach field and the neighboring well. Am I right?
But as discussed, that this is in fact, this is the same location as the existing approved septic was before that, all the years. Nothing has been changed with that.
So when we're looking at the lot coverage?
Yes.
And it says existing 22%. That's taking into account only the existing primary dwelling?
No, it takes into account everything. The primary dwelling, the existing driveway, the existing concrete patio in the front of the house. So that stuff is being removed and being replaced with addition. So the difference is actually between the existing and the proposed is a total of 5%.
And I think you were explaining it to them, but I was reading while you were doing it, so forgive me for the repetition.
No problem.
So what's the method for, what's being removed precisely to accommodate the proposed addition?
Is the right, the existing driveway, the asphalt driveway, leading to the existing portion of the house?
Right.
That's majority, and then the front, there is a huge concrete patio to be removed. In the front of the house, like, it's raised with the retaining wall. It's just, it's now, now it's the main entrance of the house, it's, so it's needed, but now it's, we're not going to use it anyway. Just going to be a side entrance anyway, something like that.
And what's the drive, what's gonna be the replacement for the driveway access?
On the left, on the left side.
Only to the addition?
Yeah, because everything will be, the main house is being relocated, and the existing house will be like some rooms part of the main house now. So it's been, everything is being remodeled. We're just leaving like the existing footprint and the existing structure, just, we don't want to remove it because we can use some of the rooms of this existing structure to accommodate the needs of the proposed house. So nothing, so the main entrance, the driveway, everything is being relocated to the addition.
Will there be a separate entrance for the, will a separate entrance remain for the existing?
The main entrance is going to be in the proposed addition. That's going to be the main entrance of the house. Then there is like some doors on the existing portion of the house, like a front door.
I'd assume the front door, right?
Yeah.
So is that remaining?
Probably yes, we can close it if that's a problem, but I've discussed that with the building inspector. I showed him the floor plans, and he told me it's not an issue according to the code, and everything looks fine. So... But we don't have any walkway leading to it. It's going to be like a door out with a deck in front of it. That's it. Taking away all the connections to that entry door.
So just jumping back to the leach field... So, just jumping back to the, the leach field.
Yeah.
So the, we're showing the existing, that's coming out, right? The existing leach field's coming out because of the expansion. And there's a new leach field shown on here. That was already, you were saying that already got approved?
It's basically, we have, the engineer was, did the soil testing. The, the existing leach field is actually much closer to the well than the proposed one.
Right, right.
So removed.
No, I was just wondering if the, the new one had gotten reviewed?
It was, if, if it got reviewed by the town engineer, I don't think so.
Okay.
No, but if that's the issue, I think we can, there is some types like planning boards, he can approve it subject to that it will be reviewed, maybe another soil test by the town engineer, but it can still get reviewed. This is just technical things, it will work, it's like.
No, I see what you mean.
Yeah.
The position of the existing one is sort, it's sort of similar to the, the proposed one in that
Correct.
It's, it's uphill of those, those two wells down the offsite property.
Probably the two wells, it's on the neighbor's property, but I assume one is out of service, one is in service. What? Or you know, one is out of service. That's usually, no one is using two wells, so.
And the only thing the building inspector put in front of us is, is the lot coverage and things like that. Are we talking, okay.
Correct.
Any other question?
Did you?
Yeah, yeah, makes sense to me.
Seth?
So, I mean, I understand the math when, when it's being proposed that the asphalt and the concrete patio is being removed, but if, if, if a decision is made on the, the variance on those assumptions, but they're not carried through, does that, does that void the, the variance approval?
In regard to the leach field?
Well, I, I, I'm looking at, you know, I mean, the, the dimensions of the driveway, the dimensions of the, the concrete patio.
I understand your question. His question is that if, how is going to be enforced that this is going to be removed?
Right, and, and I guess the other question is, you know, where is it on these, on these plans? Maybe it's on one of the other pages, like where it clearly states what the, what the area is of the existing asphalt and the existing concrete. Like how are we backing into the math that that's only, that that's basically offsetting the, the new footprint of the proposed addition?
We have, this plan was done by AFR engineering. They have the map in Excel file and they did it, they signed this plans and that's what they showed you in the bulk table, the lot coverage. It's, it's not like my plans, it's signed and sealed by engineer, professional capacity, so.
Right, because you're saying here, in this section where they state the proposed maximum lot coverage is, is 27%.
Correct. Now as you can see, look on their visions above the title block, was revised 32718, reduced in previous areas 9, 9.2% from the previous plan.
It's everything written on the map.
Yeah, so the, the original that was submitted last time, that, that you all looked at, had the maximum lot coverage of proposed as 36.6%. So what he's done is revised it and shown on the new revision, certain things to be removed. And then with those things, assuming that they're removed, that proposed lot coverage comes down to 27.0 and he's got the revision noted on the bottom right as, as of today's date. And those reductions, those, the removal of those items that are shown to be removed will reduce it by 9.2% accounting for the difference between the 36
And the 27.
And the 27.
Uh, it sounds almost like
Yes.
Reduce the variance requested, basically.
Right, I understood. So, so when he's making a statement here about the maximum lot coverage, we can take into account that that's accurately measured, the, the square, you know, the, the coverage of the existing driveway and the patio that he arrived at that math there?
Yeah.
Like even though he's not showing us this, the driveway accounts for X amount of percent of the lot, the concrete patio accounts for X percent based on, like, you know, there's nothing on here that shows dimension, so, you know, in my
That's why he has a signed map by an engineer?
Right, so there's a couple answers to that. One, that, that, one of the reasons why the board would require a, you know, a signed map by an engineer or surveyor, signed and sealed, is that that engineer is saying, look, I'm putting my reputation, I'm putting my, my license behind the fact that these calculations are accurate. You know, it, it's not unheard of and I've seen it on rare occasion that that has happened, that the, that there's a disagreement on those computations. Sometimes it's in regard to buildings and it's a disagreement among the architects. Do you measure to the inside of the wall, the outside of the wall? There can be, there can be differences along those lines. You know, if you have a significant question about it, again, you could ask the engineer for the town to take a look at it, but I know the version that I have is, you know, John Locke PE from AFR and it's, and it's signed and sealed. So you certainly would be, it would be within your discretion to rely on the accuracy of the computations on this, on this plan as submitted. If he wasn't submitting one signed with a raised seal, then I think, I think the, the, the index of suspicion, so to speak, would go up. I don't know if that answers that question?
Mm-hmm. You can certainly like put in the revision date as a, in the decision, wherever it will be written, referencing.
Right, so, so that one of the concerns of the board is, has been in regard to this leach field. And I don't know the rule on it, but I think I heard somebody saying that it's supposed to be per code 200 feet if, if the well is downfield from the leach field. Again, it's, it's not before the board for a variance on that particular matter. You know, the board's, the board has options in that regard. One of the things that I think you were going to do, or thinking about doing last time was to get the town engineer to take a look at that and give you an opinion, you know, as to what he thinks about that situation. Obviously, he's not been able to look at it, hasn't been able to review it a, as of yet. So that gives you a few options in that regard. One of the options would be, look, let's wait to hear from the town engineer. Another option would be, you know, the applicant has advocated the position that, well, look, it's, it's 120 feet now and if you can see where the old leach field was, it's also uphill and it's a little, the old leach field's a little closer, so it was okay before, so I think it's going to be okay now. That's the position. One thing that, another option that you have would be to say, look, if you were inclined to entertain a motion to approve it or approve it with conditions, a condition could be that if it was granted, subject to and conditioned upon the engineer approving, engineer's review and approval of that, the location of the leach field and in particular, its proximity to the downfield well. And if the engineer finds that it violates code and he can't approve it in that regard, then you can deem your, any approval, no and void. That's another way to deal with that issue. Again, it's, it's within your discretion as to how you want to deal with it. If you want to hear from the engineer definitively first, you, you can do that. You know, the applicant wants to get moving and is looking for a decision tonight. You, you could accommodate that if you wanted to and you could vote on it up or down or, you know, subject to condition, or you can say, look, I'd rather wait to hear from Mr. Etzel. It's within your, all of it's within your discretion.
And what's the proposed usage of the, of the addition?
It's the, single, he's, he's the owner, Mr. Stern is here. He's, this is proposed for remodeling his whole house for his family growth, change of life, like he's starting to marry his kids, so he has an extended family and different size of rooms, dining rooms, living rooms, sukkah room. So that will be basically remodeled.
I've been living here for 18 years and I've been just growing it out and more and more.
Microphone please.
I've been living here for 18 years and I'm just outgrowing this house and my, my kids are, keep on asking me, daddy, when are we, when are we going to build a new house? They, they don't even, they don't trust me anymore that we're going to because we're waiting ready for two years. And they, they, my, my, my wife is asking me about it and the kids are making fun. They say, nah, we're never going to move, we're never going to get it done. So I really want to give them a surprise for the holidays and, and tell them that, yes, we are. I mean, they are, I have a big family now and I really need a new house. I mean, I remodeled that in, in 2002, in 2000 and I would just outgrow on it. I mean, even storage I have to take away and I, I rented a storage to get it, to get it over, to get my stuff because we can, we outgrow the house.
Yeah, I mean, that's, you know, I appreciate that, that since the last time we were here, one of our big issues was reducing the footprint.
Yes.
Right? And, and definitely made strides through that, but I'll just ask, I think you actually were getting to this. You know, I'm looking at this and this, this addition is bigger than the original and so is there, again, I guess I'm, I'm kind of asking the same question and just probing, because one of the things we try to do is, we're getting a variance, we try to make the variance as limited as possible, right? So is there, you know, does, does it need to be this size? Is there any feasible way in your mind to get out of it what you want with it being a smaller footprint? I, I don't know, I gotta ask that question.
I understand. It, it, it's, it's, you know, when you build a house, you, you're building it to have like enough space and I don't want to come to the board in a couple of years again and ask the same questions again. So I want to do it as comfortable as possible and be done with it for the rest of my life and have a comfortable house. And I think this, this size, we, we went back and forth already and we came to a conclusion that this size will be a comfortable size.
A minimal.
A minimal, comfortable size and I don't, I, I will not have to take away stuff to rent storages and stuff like that. So we have enough rooms and closet space and, and all this stuff to get comfortable here for, for the rest of our lives and then stay there.
Okay.
Seth, anything else?
No, I mean, the only thing I'm, that I'm struggling with, you know, it's similar to what, you know, Bob's question, you know, it's, it's double the, nearly double, you know, even after some of the, some of the reductions have been made, it's, it's nearly double the maximum lot coverage. So, you know, when, when we're considering the five factors of is it substantial, it's, it's quite substantial. I mean, it was extraordinarily substantial prior to reducing by, you know, 9.2%. It's still a very substantial variance. And I understand all the reasons that you explained for why. But, you know, this board's responsible for evaluating the, the size of the variance being requested, I think is part of it. So I'm, I'm hung up on the fact that this is an extremely substantial variance to, to the lot coverage, even after, you know, the, the driveway and the patio have been removed.
If I can comment on that, if you can see that the existing lot coverage is already 22% and so we are just adding 5%. And addition to that, as explained, that the most lots, if you go around, most houses in the areas are actually, this is one of the smallest houses in this area. All of his neighbors have bigger houses. So really, I think it's the smallest house on this street in this area. And it's like, we have the pool here and this is basically putting up, adding up the percentage. And, and like explained that if this will be in the zoning, actually there is allowed up to 25% even. And we still, we have only the 27, so.
With sewer, you said?
Yeah, so it's like the, what I'm saying is that the governmental and the visual impact on this area, it will be no impact or almost no visible impact.
Right, just so, so it's clear, I mean, the reason, one of the reasons for, you know, trying to control lot coverage, especially in areas covered by, where wells are the water supply, is that you need recharge and, you know, you look at one individual eye, like, ah, it's a few percent, but it adds up, you know?
I understand.
The more runoff you have, the less recharge and next thing you know, the water's one of the toughest things we have around here and, you know, so that, that's why we're, that's at least personally, that's why I get concerned about lot coverage, so, or impervious coverage, because it increases runoff and it's an incremental loss, you know? The fact that other, other lots in the area already have greater coverage, that actually to me isn't a great argument to keep doing that, because, because we're relying on wells. I mean, I'm just, you know,
Right, I understand.
The logic can cut two ways, that's, that's all.
It's the point more than that, that the lot coverage was allowed up to 40%
Right.
Before, so it's like, when we designed this house, we got stuck in the middle of the moratorium.
No, I appreciate that.
Yeah.
You had a reduction.
Yeah.
I'm just saying.
Oh, we worked, I, I met him and I asked him, let's see, what can we reduce on this? He, no, I need this driveway, maybe, he's a fire chief and kids Joel, maybe I want sometimes I'm coming home with a fire truck. I told him, listen, you cannot have both and, and whatever, you will not bring home the truck.
If not of the rezoning, he wouldn't, he wouldn't have been here tonight.
Right, but, you know, my, my
Sounds, and he was almost there.
Right, but the, the purpose of the rezoning was for taking into consideration some of the things that Bob has mentioned as far as what's the appropriate zoning for the town as it exists today, right? As, you know, the population, the amount of resources that are used, what, what's an appropriate sustainable zoning?
And you can consider one thing that we had on application, like with the full set of plans in already by the building department before the moratorium was even, before the new zoning went into effect. There's a, actually, we have a permit fee check, it's deposited already in the town account for two years. It's like $5,000 approximately.
Over $1,000.
No, about 40, $4,500, something like that.
I mean, not, not that you would know this, but are there, are there other, do you know of other applicants that are in a similar situation, where, you know, you came before, you were, you were at the, at the five yard line, and, and couldn't make it over because of the, because of the moratorium?
I have-
Is there a queue of these, that are gonna be coming by us, or?
I know other applicants in this area facing now this issue, and I know, I met her, actually, I spoke to the town board, they told me that they're going to work on that. They're going to start to do something, probably I'm going to have a meeting next week again with them, not next, after the holiday, and they, looking into that to see how they can change this. The main problem is, as I explained, and that all the lots, one of the reasons I'm here, because this lot is non-conforming, so, doesn't make sense that any addition in this area will need to come before the zoning board. Even if it will conform with all the bulk tables, it will need to come before the zoning board, so.
And we go to lot area.
Lot area.
That changed from the forty thousand to an acre.
From forty thousand, correct.
Right, but the lot, lot coverage, there's not much to do about that, right?
No, they told me they're going, they're looking at-
It's not self-inflicted. I mean, you know, the, the lot area changing, you didn't do anything to change the size of your lot, but what we're considering here tonight is a proposal to change the, the coverage area, which definitely is-
So, they told me the same thing, that the lot, they believe that, they understand that the lot coverage is low, according to the lot sizes in this area. Doesn't make sense that go with, when you have three acre lots, and you go to fifteen percent, it makes sense, but when you have a one acre lot, and you go to fifteen percent, it's very limited. So, they're looking into that, too.
Have you considered any further reductions? There's a, I know you took, you did a lot to take nine percent out by removing a lot of the driveways or anything like that, is there, have you given consideration to reducing the structure, to bring the, the total lot coverage down? Or is it, I guess the question would be for the board, is it feasible to do that? Have you considered it, is it feasible?
I mean, how, how small can we reduce it to stay with a small, with old, I mean, I mean, I'm trying to get into a normal size here, lot to live normally, and not have to rent out storage and, and do stuff. I mean, this is-
I, I will explain a little bit. Actually, we did the floor plans, too, for this applicant, we were sitting, and every room, we tried to go over everything, tried to reduce, to begin with, when we came before the first time to the ZBA. And I believe that, I know the needs, and we did the minimum possible on that house. There is actually, I did, this is not of the, the biggest houses I did, it's much bigger than that, even double than this footprint.
What's the proposed total square footage of the two properties?
Um, the-
No, of the single expanded property?
It's approximate three thousand square, square feet.
For the new addition?
Yes.
And the existing is?
Existing is approximate, I think it's approximate thousand, something like that, thousand or eleven hundred, who remember the numbers, tell you the true now, out.
I think you said last time, that was a question that came up last time, and, I thought you said three thousand, is it three thousand footprint, or three thousand square?
No, three thousand is the footprint, so basically, we have a garage and a unfinished basement, it's, most of the basement in the back is underground, we have the garage in the front, and then we have a first floor, approximate three thousand square feet, and then we have the second floor. Second floor is like, I would say, in total, it's approximate two thousand, because the succo is missing, cutting into the second floor, then we have like, a big open grand foyer, two stories high, so we have the, making the two stories, bringing together the two stories at one house.
So, it's not a full floor?
No.
So, the first floor is three thousand, the second floor is two thousand?
Prox, I'm giving you approximate numbers.
Of the addition?
Yes.
And, and the existing?
The existing has like, is like, just one and a half story, it's like, a split level, but has, I will tell, it's like, it's basically, it's eleven hundred square feet. At one, there is basically have like, an existing, a living room, there's a kitchen where it's going to be changed, that according to the floor plans, there is a, two, two rooms, or three rooms, two or three rooms there, that's it. And then they have storage, like unfinished, buried basement. It's like a one story in a bi-level, split level.
So, it's not even that significant?
No, it's really small. Old one is really, really, really small, like nothing.
And you said, you, you've lived here eighteen years, so you own this, you were the owner before the change?
Correct. I think he was even the owner before the first change.
Yes, I was.
You don't have the, do you have the floor plan with you tonight?
No, I didn't bring it with me.
So, Seth, what are we doing now? Where are we off to?
Well, I'm of the opinion that the, the, the lot coverage is, in the variance that they're seeking, it's, it's too great of a lot coverage. It's double what the minimum is, or the, I say what the maximum is, so.
What are you saying, so? Look what it says on the, on the map, existing is twenty-two.
Right, but it's, it's the lot coverage is fifteen percent.
Twenty-two point one, right? And they, they proposed twenty-seven, right?
Yeah, but I'm looking at what the required versus the proposed. The required, you know, it's a maximum of fifteen percent, the proposed is almost, it's twenty-seven percent.
Yeah, but twenty-five is, is, is legal, right?
No.
Only when there's sewer, on the promises.
That's what I, you know, that's the piece, and so, even after, even in light of the reductions in, in the impervious area, you know, I, I'd like to see the, you know, the, the new footprint reduced, where it's not as substantial of, of a variance. I mean, I know, you know, we keep referencing old code, and everything else, and I think maybe that it does come into account when you're looking at the existing structure, like, I think it's unfair to ask an applicant or anybody that has had an existing structure prior to a new code, to tear down their existing structure to meet the new code, but what we're, they're proposing is an addition, which is being done now, today, and should follow today's code. And that addition constitutes, even after removing a lot of impervious service, surfaces, is almost thirty percent, it's a twenty-seven percent coverage. So, it's too big of, you know, playing English, it's, it's, it's too big of a variance, in my opinion.
If I may comment, but when taking into account that this one was before, and was actually an application, and submit, full submission before the building department, it's not like that we did something the last minute, couldn't make something the last minute, and we were working on that like, for three years. And, three years ago, we started, and then we finished the plan, submitted, we got the denial for other reasons, not for lot coverage, and we got stuck two years, and now we're coming back, we need to reduce it. It's like, I think the board may consider that, that it's not like, we're coming, I'm coming now with a new design, there is a new zoning, I don't want to comply with the new zoning, it's like, I have something, I have something prior to the new zoning. And as I explained, I reduced the most possible I could do. I would like to keep forty percent, and now I'm actually down to twenty-seven percent, and so at least this, the board should consider this and approve this that way. He, he was stuck with this house years, so he was, he wanted to build a couple of years earlier, but it's like, took time till he got his business growth, and he got the money to go to the next step of his life, and rebuild his house, and now, once he got to that step, he got stuck, like.
I've taken that into consideration.
Appreciate that.
Yeah, I, I completely agree with Seth, I think the, about going by, you gotta, we gotta go by the book, however, the one thing that does give me pause is, is how far you had this in, previously, you were the pre-existing owner, and I, I just, I'm wrestling with that, because I understand where you're coming from. You know, you, you bought this property under previous zoning, and you almost had it to the goal line, but it wasn't quite there. That's, that's the only reason I'm even-
Yeah.
I'm thinking the other way, that's why I'm kinda waffling on it.
No, I know, but the whole purpose is-
But yeah, oh no, I, I get it, I'm just saying, I'm, I'm not, haven't even made up my mind yet, that's, that's what I'm waffling on.
It's not only, it's not only the purchase, it's like, the, the, the fact, what we did already, and this, before that, we got up to a point, and we got stuck with that.
Okay, do you have any comments from the public on this matter?
No.
Do you want me to give you your options right now?
Okay.
You got a number of options, a number of factors to consider.
Okay.
Okay, one, one thing you could do is entertain a motion to approve or disapprove. Now, another thing you could do is keep the public hearing open, and bring them back next meeting, to discuss, and hopefully get a review from the engineer in between, or to otherwise consider more information. One factor you might consider is that there are only four of you here tonight, not five, and it sounds like the board is on, you know, has some serious questions, and, and there's some things going on here that, that may require input, you may desire more input from the other members, so you could keep a public hearing open for that purpose. If all of you think you have enough information to vote for it or against it right now, you don't have to wait, you can vote now, for or against. You know, if it's, if you get a majority of the, of the people present, or, you know, you need, you're gonna need three votes to pass it, or to deny it, you know, if you don't know that you're gonna have that, because there's only four of you here, not five, that's another thing that you might consider. You want to vote, and, and go forward with a vote one way or the other, again, you can, you can solve the issue with the engineer the way I suggested that you might earlier, which is, again, if it's a motion to approve, it would be on the condition that we talked about earlier. If it's a motion to deny, it would be, you know, it wouldn't be relevant, because you wouldn't be conditioning in denial on anything. There's, there's a myriad of ways that you could proceed here, so that's, that's some of them. So, the first question is, do you want to keep the public hearing open, or not? If you want to keep the public hearing open, you can do that, and you could adjourn it to the next available meeting. If you wanted to close the public hearing tonight, you could do that. You also don't have to vote tonight, you could close the public hearing and then vote, you have sixty-two days from the date that the public hearing is closed, in order, before you have to take a vote. So, that's another option, again.
Okay, I'll make a motion to vote, to close the public hearing tonight.
I'll second it.
All in favor?
Are we, are we waiting on, are we comfortable with the, the subject surrounding the septic?
We could put that in condition, that the attorney explained.
Yeah, I, I, my thought is that I'd like it looked at, but it's, it wasn't something the building inspector put in front of us, but it's definitely something that's glaring, but it seems reasonable, you know?
It's reasonable to put as a condition.
I, I definitely would like that, to know that's being taken care of.
We could put that in a condition.
Right, put in condition.
In order to hear from the engineer. The engineer is gonna tell us if it's approved, if, if the engineer approves it, then the variance is, is approved. If he denies it, then the variance is denied. That, that means a condition on that.
Right. Again, you could deal with it two ways, like, if, if you say, look, for example, if you think, hey, that might be an issue that is relevant to factor four, you know, whether the proposed variance have an adverse effect or impact on the physical environmental conditions of the neighborhood or district, and I gotta know the answer to that, before I'm comfortable voting on that factor, well then, you know, your vote would be to not close the public hearing.
That's wrong, man.
You'd want that. On the other hand, it would be rational, again, it's, the test of what you do is just rationality.
Right.
You know, is, is it, is there a rational basis for what you do? That would be rational. It would also be rational to say, well, I don't think it affects that, it affects that factor because of what the applicant was advocating, that, that it's, you know, it looks like it's close enough to the other one, that it's not gonna adversely affect, and it's a bigger leach field, so I'm confident enough to, to vote on the variance because of that factor, but I do want to make sure that the, that the building, that the engineer looks at and either approves or disapproves.
That's right.
Both are rational. Again, it's, it's really just what's in your gut, and what you believe, and what you'd like to see, among the various things that you could do, so.
Okay, we start to close the public hearing.
Right, so there's a, there's a motion and a second to close the public hearing.
So.
And there's discussion on that motion right now, and, and then, if there's any further discussion on that motion, you can have it, if you're done with discussion on it, you can, you can vote on that motion to close the public hearing. Again, that does not necessarily mean you have to vote tonight, but it would be, it would permit you to vote. We could close it, as long as you can make that a condition.
Yeah, we could make the condition. That we, the engineer has to approve it. So, we have your vote for close the public hearing.
To close the vote.
Yeah.
Yes. All in favor?
Aye.
Now, we're gonna, next thing, we're gonna make a motion to approve it, with the condition of the report from the engineer about the leach field.
You've made that motion?
I made that motion, yes.
I'll second it.
All in favor?
So, we're voting on the variance right now?
Yes. We can, with the condition of approval of the engineer for the leach field, if it's gonna affect the well. Now, we discussed all the factors already?
Don't we have to go through those?
Yes.
Yeah.
We'll go through the five factors.
Well, we- Yeah, you can do it now as discussion on that motion.
Yes.
And then have the motion outstanding, or you could withdraw the motion, discuss the factors, and then re, and then renew your motion.
Okay, well-
I think that's cleaner to do it that way.
Okay, yes, we'll withdraw the motion, and we'll do the five factors before we vote on that. Number one, whether an undesirable change will be produced in the character of the neighborhood, or a determinant to nearby properties will be created by granting of the area variance?
No.
I don't think it has an impact on the character of development based off of the lot coverage in other areas, but I think that it, you know, based, you know, following through on what Bob's comments were, I have a concern on the size of the, the lot coverage, the amount of lot coverage. I think that could have an impact on, on it, based on the amount of impervious surface.
Because the houses in the area, the next door neighbor is a much bigger house than this, and others, both sides.
Could you, could you read that, I just wanna, could you read that question again?
Yes, whether an undesirable change will, will be produced in the character of the neighborhood, so it won't change-
I would say, I would say-
Or detriment to nearby property.
Right.
But, but, Jones, just to, again, I'm not, I'm not the planner, I wasn't involved in, you know, the, the town's master plan.
Okay.
But I gotta imagine- But I gotta imagine that her decisions to establish zoning in certain areas and the requirements that went along with those zoning was...
I understand what you're saying, yes.
What she saw the existing, the existing environment or impacts to the environment to be in the entire town. So it probably led...
The question here was if it's the character of the neighborhood.
Right.
The character of the neighborhood.
The first part of that, I, right.
The houses in that area are big houses.
Right.
Bigger than these.
The second part of that question, I guess, is what my response is.
Yeah, I think, if I'm hearing what you're saying right, if I could help, uh, if I think, if I think I hear what you're saying right is that the code is so new that the prior homes may be just as big now, but, but there was, was apparently, you know, a reason that the new code was put into place and that had to do with, you know, moving the character of the neighborhood into a particular way by reducing the lot coverage. And this is, it's difficult to apply that factor when you have a brand new code.
Right.
And I think that's, am I right that that's what you're struggling with about?
But I also interpret that as two parts, that initial question, right? One was in, in regards to the character of the neighborhood, so I agree.
Or a detriment to nearby properties will be created...
Or detriment, right?
Detriment, yes, I'm sorry. Detriment to nearby properties will be created by granting the area variance.
I don't know if I'm allowed to put in a comment now and that...
Again, it's up to the chairman, but technically speaking, the answer is no. The, the public hearing's closed.
Okay.
If you, if you wanna recognize him, you can, uh, but will you be within your discretion to, to, to say no?
Let's hear what he has to say. Maybe he can help.
No, it's basically if you will take a look on the, on the master plan and on the zoning, it's actually in the master plan, it calls for a much higher density than the existing zoning. They just did the 15% on where there, where it stays a single family and a single lot. But they allowed now SR10, that's 10,000 square feet lots on this property. So technically, this lot, according to the zoning now, let, it, I will need to bring in sewer and wa, sewer, just sewer for that. And that will happen probably in the next couple of years. It's starting, people are working on it. You're allowed to do like three lots from this lot by itself. Technically four, but you're, you're not meeting the lot sizes. So you can do, you can do only three lots and three single-family houses.
How big could he make each family house?
That's basically, that's a 25% lot coverage, but it's not only the coverage...
How many square foot to each house?
Depends on the lot. I mean, we'll need to do the...
The coverage of the 25...
Yeah, we'll need, basically. But, but as the point we're bringing, bring out that we can have like three separate houses on this lot where it's actually much more density. And when you have a three singles rather than one, one big one, it's definitely smaller, it's more feasible, it's more economical, more environmental friendly. So it's definitely, it's not affecting and not changing.
And, and I guess what I'm considering, you know, in lot coverage is not the number of dwellings.
Right. No, I understand.
It's the lot coverage.
I understand your point.
Right.
Yeah.
I was gonna say, the other, the other consideration on that is the detriment to the other properties. That's something that's, we're gonna make a condition for the engineer to look at because these wells are on the other properties. So he'll make a, he'll make a determination on that. So assuming, it's almost like answering this question is assuming the engineer says it won't be a detriment.
Okay, yeah.
You know...
Yes, because you gotta go on.
Right.
You can't stop there. Okay, number two, whether the, the benefits sought by the applicant can be achieved by some method feasible for the applicant to pursue other than an area variance.
No.
The applicant just told us that it's too small, his house and...
I, I mean, yes, but it's a matter of what's too small. You know, like what, what's, that, that's a matter of preference, I think, on, on the applicant's, you know, right?
That's why we're here tonight.
Right.
To listen to the applicant.
It's feasible. It's feasible. I mean, it would cost less money for the applicant to build a smaller dwelling. So it's not like, you know, there's financial constraints to, you know, prevent him from building a smaller dwelling. Whether it's desirable, it's not desirable. It's feasible.
Right, so, so again, this, this factor is a tricky one because you can look at it from a number of different perspectives. Um, and the case law comes at it from a number of different perspectives. One thing that, uh, you have to realize is that you're taking into account a balancing factor. It's the benefit sought by the applicant. The applicant has told you what the benefits, you know, is that he's seeking. He's seeking his comfort. And the question is, can he seek that comfort in some other feasible, feasible way?
And there's a pre-existing...
You know, you know, one thing that you could look at is, is there, is there some other way for him to achieve that same benefit? Adding to the second floor while reducing the footprint that changes the lot coverage? Are there thi, I mean, I don't know. Are, are there things as, are, as a board member, do you think it's feasible for him to do something else that would reduce or eliminate the variance that he's seeking while also achieving the benefit that he is seeking? Because you do have to take into account the benefit that he's seeking.
I mean, right now, it's an, it's a one-story primary dwelling. So it's, it's feasible that, that the addition could take place within the same footprint. So it's feasible. It might not be desirable, right? Or, or meet the, the wants. That's what I'm wrestling with here, a very big way.
So your answer to number two?
Can I answer something for Seth?
Okay, let's hear it.
Seth, the, the reason that the new house is cut out, it, the answer is for, for trying to get hi, higher is already, I have already a couple of connections to that that I made already. And it's, it's like, if I do anything to this house, it's like going out of proportion. The, the kitchen is on, is on a debt, is on, like, built out. It's like an extension. And then I have fruit trees from both sides. I cannot do a soc over there. That's why the new house is cut out and staying away from these two trees. I cannot get them out. The whole house, everything was brainstormed to stay away from these trees. And I had to make my soc on the other side because these trees cannot be on top of the soc. I mean, I'm like locked in with this old house that I cannot do more than storage and maybe another room, a guest room. There is nothing I can do because these trees are going on top of my old house and I cannot put a soc on both sides. I'm like locked in and I'm like forced in to do this new addition because there's nothing really we can do. We brain, we tried brainstorming what we can do and that's why we had a cutoff from the new also. Otherwise, it would be a square box. And you can see on the right of it that it's cut out like two cuts because I have to stay away by law, by Jewish law, I have to stay away three times as much as that tree. So if it's 10 feet, I have to stay away from the roots that I shouldn't kill that tree. So that's why I cut out pieces of the new addition to stay away from it. And now I have, I had issues laying it out also because I had to put stuff on the other side because the trees doesn't stop growing. And I cannot trim it. I cannot do anything with that. I have to, I, I was just forced to do that addition, not because I wanted to. I was looking, trying to do something with my old, but I'm forced in from both sides. If you're gonna see on the, on the right side by...
Right side in the back.
On the right side in the back, there's a fruit tree. On the left side, I'm locked in from both sides. And front and back, I did already everything I can do. So I, I, the only thing I can do is maybe a little bit higher, but it's, how many steps can I, I mean, it's going out of proportion, out of everything. That's why we did that and we cut out already what we could, what we had to.
Is there a way to, to accomplish what you're trying to accomplish with a smaller footprint of the addition? I understand based off of what you're saying and, and looking at the image here, you know, it wouldn't create probably much additional usable space going up on the existing dwelling. But, you know, is there a feasible way to reduce the footprint of the addition where we're not looking at a 27% lot coverage? You know, you know, what does that mean, you know, on the perimeter? Is it bringing it in?
I, I would, I would take, take even out the whole, the, the... We were thinking about removing parts of the old house also because it's not even nice to have it this way. But we have the roots from these two trees going underneath it. And I had a fruit expert over there, a tree expert, and he told me if I touched that, I'm, these trees might die. And I, that's why I'm like limited with this lot. Whatever I'm trying to do, I'm like limited. I, he, he came to me that I'm gonna tear up my old driveway in my deck that I'm using already for 18 years. I wanted to kill him. I said, you, are you mind? What, what are you trying to do? I mean, we, we were brainstorming and sitting on this property already for these two years and trying to see if we can reduce the coverage over here.
But not on, not on the prime, not on the existing...
Even on the, on the, on the, on the new even, I'm forced to go this way. You see on the, on the new one, livable space, I have a nice entry inside, but it's not, it's not like, I mean, I'm trying to get this done that I shouldn't have to do it again in my life. I mean, this is like middle of my life and I'm trying to s... I'm gonna start now marrying out my children and I'm trying to get them, they're gonna come with grandchildren. I mean, I gotta be able to breathe and not being here again and trying to put a shovel on my ground again. So we, I'm limited with this addition. Whatever I try to do, I was sitting already putting in a lot of money with engineers about the fruit trees and trying to take off the old tongue, the, the old house and trying to do stuff to limit it. But I, I'm basically limited with that. There's nothing. I'm, I'm paying now for almost 800 square feet of storage. I'm paying monthly now to have it. And this is what I have in my old house, is the storage. This is what I took away to my other, to that storage. I mean, i, i, it's a hassle for me also to go back and forth with, with, because my kids, it, it, it's closed. It's not just storage. It's closed that my kids are reusing and my wife has to go. I have to take her and we have to go. It has to be a climate, environment. I cannot just not put it in a regular storage. That's why I was thinking this is the right place to have a storage and bring it back and it wouldn't cost me. So these two years is, is like costing me and I, I, I mean, I'm try, I tried already what I could to take off the whole or go up with the old. It, I, I, I'm basically forced into that, not because I want it, because I came to that conclusion. We pushed, we were pushed into that, to get that done. And I'm not gonna get any, too much use from the old house more than having storage and maybe one room where my kids are gonna get married and they're gonna come. I mean, so that, that, that's, that's what I'm trying to get here. It's not like, and, and I'm looking over from my window, there's a double-sized house right when I'm looking out. That, right side, left side, every, everywhere. And that's what my kids keep on asking. Everybody can build and you cannot, how come? On my, on Seven Springs Road, there is now construction with, with, uh, uh, almost, I don't know how many square feet house. Uh, I think it's 7,000 a squ, a floor. And he's talking about a basement, first floor and second, three floors. I mean, it is, I, this is not even a house that I would dream of, of getting. I, I, I would build that before, right, long before the new zoning came out. But now I, I can afford it finally, so I'm trying to get that. But we tried already, trying to reduce whatever we could from, from out. But I'm telling you, these two fruit trees are like locking me in with, with it, with everything. And I cannot even touch the foundation from the old one. I would, I would do it if I could. I mean, we were thinking about that.
Just, just kinda brainstorming. I mean, maybe this isn't feasible at all, but I'm looking at, you know, just trying to give it a fresh look. What would, what, what things would I look at to maybe further reduce the coverage? The, the, the deck around the pool, is that, would that, is there any feasible way? Because that's actually taking up a lot of room. I mean, maybe, I've never been there. I don't know what it looks like, but I'm just tossing it out there. It's, it's covering a large area. Is there any way to reduce that? In the same way that you're taking out the concrete?
It's not, it's not really a deck. It's a, it's a concrete around the pool that used to come in into the pool, a lot of dirt. And I, I used, I used to have to vacuum it like 10 times a, a week.
Okay.
And I just covered it with concrete that it shouldn't come in, the stuff inside. I mean, I, I did it maybe six years ago because it cost me a lot, the pool, to, to maintain that. So that's why I covered it and now it's comfortable. I don't have to, I, I don't have to...
Yeah, I was just, I was just looking at additional coverage.
We tried, we tried looking at it.
I'm not saying take out the whole thing, I was just...
Yeah, I was looking, we were looking at, we discussed that. We discussed every single thing to try to accommodate that. And I'm like forced in to that.
Who owns the adjoining lot?
On the left side?
North or south?
North of it. Is it, is that your lot or is it?
This is north.
The, this one, Mr. Hirsch?
Oh, I see you.
Yeah.
Crassy?
Crassy Epstein?
Epstein.
Oh, Epstein, yeah.
Yeah. They also doubled the house a couple of years ago.
They have also a big pool there.
Yes.
With a concrete patio around.
Those are approximate, that's fine. I'm looking at this. Uh, yeah, this isn't a plan. It says approximate.
Right.
It's like an overlay of the map. I'm looking at that, I'm trying to understand what... I mean, I'm not a mathematician, but what is, what's the impact to the percentage of, of lot coverage if, if the house is brought in 10 feet on its perimeter, five feet on its perimeter? You know, like, you know, the proposed addition, like...
Like to take off a piece around there?
Yeah, around the whole, you know, like...
Make everything a little bit smaller.
Changing the whole concept of the, it's the, we did, we checked the kitchen, the dining room, the living room, there's the soc room. Everything has a size that I know from experience and we know from all the families and the size of the families and the needs. I did, I did already, I would say I designed over 2,000 units in the history in the last couple of years and...
And I understand what you're saying. You know, the, it's, it's hard to understand that a, a 3,000 square foot first floor, 2,000 square foot second floor, that there's no room to trim back the, the footprint of that to allow for less of a variance that you're seeking.
I can, I can explain you a little bit the house. It's basically when you're coming in the middle, you have a huge foyer because that's the entry and everyone is, that's basically taking off the whole center of the house. Then on the left...
Can I stop you there for a second?
Yeah.
And, and I understand, like, you know, we all aspire to build our dream homes and we have a vision of that. But like, you telling me that there's a necessity for a two-story grand entrance foyer when we're struggling here to, myself trying to find a way to reduce the footprint, like, it, it just... That I have a hard time wrapping around. Like, you saying to me, you know, you know, I can't reduce it Like, you saying to me, you know, you know, I can't reduce it because it's gonna sacrifice bedrooms and I've got X amount of people that need X amount of rooms, like, the foyer, like, if we could do away with the foyer and it's gonna allow you to provide for the living space, like, nobody lives in the foyer.
No, well, probably the explanation for the foyer is basically that's the access to all the rooms. So, basically, that's the middle. From that, you're going into the dining room, you're going into the kitchen, you're going into the study. It's not like we, no one wants to have a, like, a house, it's coming in, he has hallways leading to all the rooms. That's what happening once you're making it smaller.
So, so, it's, and, and I don't know, I, I know we already voted to, to close the public hearing. I, I fully, I'm sympathetic to a lot of things that you said already. As far as your timing prior to the moratorium, I'm a family man that you're doing this to provide more for your family. I understand and I'm sympathetic to all those things. The piece that I'm continuing to get hung up on and it's not gonna change is the, the size of the variance that we're seeking, which is, is a product of the amount of lot coverage that this proposed addition, even after we've removed some of the surfaces, is gonna, is gonna equate to. You know, wh- what I would feel more comfortable, you know, in answering that question, is it feasible in any other way? Is if I saw the actual, the actual floor plans of this? Like, what are we proposing that's equating to this size of, of a footprint? And, 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 and I can't guarantee that that's gonna, you know, make me say, "Well, okay, well then that's fine for that level of variance." But it may give me some insight to say, "It's not feasible to accomplish in any other way." And I am sympathetic to, to some of the things that you mentioned already. But without that, a- again, you know, I can't do the quick math, but if, if, if the footprint was reduced five feet, you know, on the entire perimeter, which means that, you know, each of the rooms are five feet smaller, you know, it may, that could spell a, a pretty significant percentage reduction. You know, and, and will it still allow you to accomplish some of the things that, that you're looking for? And I, I can't answer that without, without that, I'm of the mindset that it's, it's, it's too big of a proposed, a proposed, you know, lot coverage and variance, so, that's...
Do you have the layout, maybe?
I don't know, I have it here, I have it in email.
I have it in email, I have it on my phone. But we were trying, these rooms, if we trim down the rooms, they, they're supposed to have two beds, like a boy's room with, with, with a closet. If we start trimming them down, the beds are gonna stop fitting, fitting in there. There's no room, it's getting unproportioned. We didn't, came up with that layout just, and we said, "Okay, we're gonna go with this big house." We, 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 he, I was sitting with, 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 with his associates days and he asked me, "What are your needs?" And he accommodated my needs accordingly. And that's the way he proposed the house.
Which, which I'm sure correlated to rooms and living space, but how did you, like, you mean to tell me that there was, there was no discussion on how do we stay as close to as possible on, you know, we're already at twenty-two percent, how do we have as least of a change to the, to the lot coverage? Like, was there a discussion on like, what's the smallest, knowing that we're, we're already gonna be seeking a variance? What's the least amount of variance that, that we can seek? Still, you know, making sure that you don't bump into the walls when you walk into a room, right? Like, somewhere between, like, like again, this is all based off of, you know, opinion, right? Like, what's an appropriate sized room, right? Well, yes, it has to fit a, a, it has to fit a, a bed, right? It has to...
I, I got to your concern, but the question is, how you, will you make the determination on that once I have the plans? Like, I will tell that I need a fifteen-feet-wide dining room, you will tell me ten feet is enough. It's like, you can start arguing with every room.
Right, of course, you know, but there's, 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 there's a realm of something being reasonable, right? Like, yeah, I can't, y- y- you propose a twenty, a twenty-by-twenty dining room and I say you can get away with, you know, a, a four-by-four dining room?
It's, it's always depends on the lifestyle and whatever.
Agreed, but right now, what we're seeking is...
The amount of children, the amount of family members.
Well, no, and I, and I, I understand all that, but what we're seeking is a variance to, to, to code. You know, so, you know, one of the things that I, that I'm tasked to consider is, what's the size of that variance? And is it feasible through any other way to, to lessen the size of that variance? And based off of, off of this, it's, it's substantial. And I'm of the, of the belief that it's feasible. That there's somewhere within five thousand square foot of additional dwelling on top of a...
Yeah.
Thousand-foot, fifteen-hundred-foot, you know, existing. You, you, you're talking about almost six thousand square, you know, six, seven thousand square feet of, of living space. You know, if my wife, you know, if I told her that she had a walk-in closet that was an existing home for storage, she would do backflips. And what we're proposing is that this is now gonna become entirely storage, which maybe it has less of a need for closet space in, in the new dwelling. All I'm saying is some things to consider, like, if you're asking me, if, if you're saying, and I can't, I can't tell you, you know, what you should aspire to, what you want for your family, but if you're telling me this is non-negotiable, like, this is the absolute minimum-sized dwelling that I need to build to accommodate, then I'm of the mindset that that's too significant of, of lot coverage.
The house itself, the new addition, is not that significant at all. I've seen a lot of houses and I was also wondering till tonight why he didn't connect the two houses nice and square. Now, I got it because he didn't wanna take off the trees, but this is not a big addition at all.
It's five thousand square feet?
Yeah, it's, it's a nice big house for a family that, that, that needs for that amount of family members. It's a, it's a li- it's not like a rich, huge mansion where all rooms will be significantly big with furniture and stuff. It's a nice livable area, not all of them is, is, is even on the main floor. He has cutouts, here he has cutouts. The look of this, I would never do myself on my house, but he has to do it, he was forced to do that. And it's a nice place to, just to live comfortable without, uh, coming back in a few years and then do an addition. So, he would have take, like he explained, he would have taken down the, the old dwelling, but he had problems with that. He'll make more of a mess and more problems. Uh, he's leaving as much as trees as possible and the houses not to. I don't see it as a bigger house. I would build, and anybody would build a big, much bigger house on a property like this. That's what I think.
Joel, do you have, do you have any, uh, microfilming? I'm sorry, and this is, again, just the brainstorming category, you know, like we're talking about the pool.
Yeah.
Any experience with, with, uh, permeable pavement? I know they have that, I had a look at that at a project where...
I didn't, I, I know where you're talking, we didn't study it deeply, but I know what you're talking about.
Yeah, where it's, it's a pavement, but it, y- y- you could count it as an, it allows infiltration. It, I mean, it's probably more expensive, I can't give you a unit cost for...
It's not that expensive. It is more expensive, but I, I'm not sure if it's that more expensive, it just ma- it's maintenance is the issue.
Right, right, right.
Yeah, it's not that, the installation is not a problem, the maintenance is the issue.
But that would be a significant...
Will, will you recommend this to change the proposed driveway for that?
Well, that's what I was just thinking, you know, to make it, make it permeable and that would, that would be a, a significant percentage reduction. At least, uh, I, and again, I, I, you know, I don't have those numbers, I don't know what, what the cost is, but...
What is that, like pavers?
It's, it's actually perme- it's called permeo- permeable pavement.
Permeable pavement, yeah.
Yeah, it, it's a type of pavement that allows water to seep through. Sometimes it's in like a honeycomb shape.
Right.
Right, and it's got dirt, but it's, but it's pavement so that a car won't sink into the mud.
Yeah, I saw that, but it's...
And the grass, grass come out of it, right.
You have to, you have to.
Some codes, some codes don't allow that to count as a reduction for lot coverage. So, you know, I don't know, I don't know what the Monroe Code says on that, I don't know if anybody's familiar with that.
I checked, I don't think there's anything, it's, there's nothing addressing that. So, it's not a yes, it's not a no.
So, then it probably counts as a reduction, you know, because if it's semi-permeable, you're basically reducing a percentage of that area. Some, a percentage of that area counts as impermeable, but, uh, some does not count as the way that usually is addressed, to my understanding. And, uh, uh, again, this is in the same vein, like, to me, the whole thing about reduced lot coverage is to maintain recharge.
Right.
Or wells. So, if you have roof leaders coming off the house, are they just going to the ground?
Yes.
If, if there is a way to, again, this, this is a mitigating thing?
I was, I was thinking...
I got to your point, they have a way to catch the water and put it like in pits.
I was thinking to put it in, at the, I was just, oh, the, I was just by, by the show, by the building show and I came home with a sure about that, putting in and using it for irrigation for the grass again.
Rain gardens.
So, that's what I, I, I have, actually, I didn't take too many of the bar shores, but one of those I bring home because the wells has like iron and it, it irons the, the house. I was thinking to reuse that water and that's one of the things that we're considering also, is, uh, on that, on the house and having that holding tank, it's gonna help.
Yeah, I mean, they have holding tanks or, or, or sometimes it's just gravel.
Yeah, yeah, that's, it's a special system, it's a special system that, that they're making and I have the sure. And I, that's one of the things that I'm thinking to get it, to put in, to get my rain gardens in and there and reuse it for irrigation, that water.
So, we can add this to the, like, put in as a condition that will need to address that the foreign drain, subject to the review of the engineer. He will, he will know exactly what's need to be done in order to get, what is, what detail needs to be put in the plan in order to get this water captured from the roof.
Cause, I mean, just to tell you where I'm at, I'm, I'm...
I understand the point.
I have all the concerns Seth does, I sympathize with your, your position where you purchased this lot under one set of zoning. You spent a lot of effort and what you had originally planned was good to go in that former zoning. But the reason the zoning was changed is not to give you a hard time, they looked at the, the whole region and, and, you know, to me, water is the big resource.
No, but I think, I think this is a great idea of irrigation.
If this was, if you had just bought this property now, under the current zoning, I would have, I'd be much more open to things like permeable pavement and, and, and like things that would enhance recharge, talking to you as a, somebody who's owned this property for eighteen years, you know, so I'm just trying to get at what they were trying to do with this zoning change. And to me, the, the main thing was reduce surface runoff and increase recharge.
So, so I, just as attorney, I, I've got two comments on that. One, it sounds like what you're getting at is, is factor number four. You have a concern that there's gonna be an adverse impact on the physical and environmental conditions in the neighborhood district. Sounds like that's where that, that concept that's bothering you fit into the analysis.
Right, right.
Um, uh, the other one in terms of this, this rain garden idea. I, I don't know how you would do that in terms of a condition because it's, again, let me step back a minute. A good chunk of what everybody's been discussing for the last fifteen, twenty minutes, keep in mind, is not in the public hearing record. None of it's in the record. If, if it was approved and there was an Article seventy-eight against it, or if it was disapproved and there was an Article seventy-eight, nothing that was discussed since the public hearing was closed is on the record as con- as considered. So, in regard to, to, we need to keep that in mind a- as we continue this, this discussion. And it's healthy, it's a healthy discussion, but it's just off the record for the hearing purposes. Um, but in regard to the, the rain garden, I'm not sure without there being discussion on the record during the hearing about what the rain garden is or that these are the specifications and this is what it would do. How do we get that into the record? How do we make it a condition? It's gonna be X system, it's gonna look like this. How does the engineer, you know, subject to engineering review, what is he reviewing? What's his standards? What's it gonna be? Is it gonna be requirement? It's, it's, it's hard, so it's, it's, I wanted to express those concerns as attorney, uh, right now.
Understand, as, as a planner standpoint, I can, I, I think we can make it simple that the, let's take a portion. He can, he, his concern, let's take the roof. The water from the roof need to be taken care, need to be addressed within underground or above-ground detention system. And it's very simple, there are various options that can be done and that would be subject to the Mark Etzel's review and between Mark Etzel and AFR Engineering.
The main concern of area coverage is the rainwater.
Well, you know, I was just gonna comment on that, like, I, I don't, professionally, I can't comment on that because I wasn't the one that designed the plan. I, you know, I don't know what her specific thought process was on why lots required a maximum lot coverage. I, I'm assuming reasonably, at least one part of it is, yeah, recharge. I don't know if it's the only, um...
But it's a thing to, to take in consideration. If, if the owner is ready to, to, to do something about it, maybe we could see it as a, as a fact that, of consideration.
It's a good balance of irrigation.
My deal, you know, and then, you know, it's the question surrounding that is, is what Dave mentioned is, is what's the...
What's the condition? What's the specifics on it?
Right. Whenever you have a condition, the idea is, has to be clear enough that when the applicant, uh, leaves with an approval with that condition and he goes and he's getting ready to get his permits and start construction, that the building inspector is guided and knows clearly what is, what's the standard by which he's, he's gauging compliance with the zoning board's decision and that condition. Well, you know, so i- i- if you were to try to come up with something, you've gotta make it reasonably finite so that it's not, all right, well, you have to deal with the roof water somehow and then the building inspector says, "What the heck am I supposed to do with this?" When you come and you say, "I'm gonna, I'm gonna take one drop per six months and put it into a bucket." You know, "I dealt with it, I'm in compliance, but it's not the spirit." What does the building inspector do? So, we've gotta do, if it's gonna be a condition, it has to be dealt with in a more concrete way so that everybody knows exactly. And the building inspector would know exactly what's expected of him in reviewing that. So, it becomes difficult to do, I guess my only point as attorney, it becomes difficult to do when we don't have a hearing that's developed on the issue, you know?
But, but this is still on record, on the recorded, right?
It's recorded.
It, it, it is.
Just, whatever. In the minutes, it will be in the minutes, probably the discussion will be...
Be in the minutes, but again, not in the hears.
Not as the hearing.
Yeah.
Now, could the engineer tell us more exactly on what you're saying? That, uh, the specification in order to be, guide the inspector? Let me tell, let me tell the, the, our, the town engineer to look at the, at the, we were talking about before that he should look at the septic. So, now we're gonna tell him another issue about, uh, the rainwater and he could guide the...
But I assume it would have to be part of, the same way that certain items are detailed in, in the plan document itself with the inspector to interpret, right?
Yeah, I mean, it's a calculation, you say, how much is the typical rain, you know, typical rain events? What's the permeability of soil? It's, it's almost like a perk test, right? And you say, how much, how big, how big are, uh...
What is the size of the roof? How much water is coming down in that period of the area?
It wouldn't have to be a hundred percent, it would have to offset, I mean, the, the spirit of what we're talking about is to offset it to be about the equivalent of a fifteen percent coverage. I mean, and, cause it really is, the, the, the...
It's usually in different sites, when you have over-acre disturbance, you need to go with a SWIP and you need to have a zero runoff.
Right.
Then you need, you're addressing that item. So, it's the same similar situation that you want zero runoff from the roof or whatever, you want ninety percent. So, you, you can specify that, that hundred percent runoff of the roof should be, um, should be, uh, taken care within this property.
Right.
And the way there is, there's certain different ways that will be between Mark Etzel and AFR to find a feasible way with the size with this lot to treat that water here. That's, it's very int- it's a great idea, it's...
Yeah, I'm just, I think, there's only a couple of things to play with here.
Yeah, right.
But, but on, on your, cause, at least my experience with lot coverage, on, on, I don't do any residential work, but on the industrial sites I've had to work on, when we have too much coverage, it's usually, okay, what are we gonna pay to upscale the stormwater systems? Cause that's taking the runoff and what are we gonna do about recharge? So, in my experience, it's been primarily a water, a water balance issue with a lot of coverage. Um, so, I, that's been a...
Let me just see the, uh, three thousand. So, it's about, it's about thirteen percent.
What's thirteen percent?
The house, the three thousand square feet is about thirteen percent. So, if you have a zero runoff on that, then you're almost taking care, you're almost down to, you're basically fourteen percent.
So, two, two things. If what we're discussing is the direction that, that the applicant goes, you know, what were the things that would need to be specifically in plan documents in order to cover that condition? And the other piece of it, you know, again, my own personal preference, and, and I understand, I mean, you, you're experienced in other...
Right, I mean...
Codes and, and, and commercial end of things, you know, for the code that we're responsible for evaluating in this town, right, that this board's responsible for, what's the, what's the spirit of the, of the code that was put in place? You know, what, what were the reasonings behind it? And evaluating that against whether or not some of the things that we're proposing, what the applicant's proposing meets that? You know, so, the other piece of it, you know, I'd like to have a conversation with, with Bonnie on this. You know, on, you know, to gain some further insight to what is the, what's behind the, the maximum lot coverage? Is it solely based off on recharge and runoff? And if that's her, her professional opinion and her answer, and there's a solution proposed by the applicant to accommodate that and to solve that, then, you know, I, I'd be able to make a decision on that. If that's not the only factor, then I'd, I'd have to weigh that. I think, I think we'd all have to weigh that on a decision.
Right, and the other part, I, I agree with that. The other part of this is that this isn't like a, a global thing that we'd apply. You know, this gentleman's got put between a rock and a hard place and that's why we're even considering that. That, that's, that's where, that's where I'm at. I'm not like, hey, anybody that's got, does, has too much coverage, uh, we got, we got other routes for you. But I, I definitely sympathize with you on, on this, given, you know, I'm, I'm trying to put yourself, myself in your shoes saying what happens if they change things on my property and I, you know, I, I get it.
And now, I, I, we'd have to seek your counsel on what is that in a way of setting precedent, you know, is it now?
Yeah, I mean...
Like, these are all, so, I, I mean, these are all things I think that are pretty big questions that are left unanswered at this point.
Yeah, uh, well, th- there's a lot there, right? There's, you know, in terms of the, the, the quote-unquote simple one, in terms of what's setting precedent and what doesn't, um, you know, a zoning board is a quasi... and what doesn't, you know, a zoning board is a quasi-judicial body of sort, and it's bound by its own precedent. It's not bound... When applications are substantially similar, the zoning board has to follow its prior precedent absent a reasonable explanation for a departure from that. So, each application stands on its own, and nothing... No decision, no one decision stands as an absolute precedent in regard to future applications because every property is unique and has its own unique characteristics and history and sort of robust facts behind what brought them here to the zoning board in the first place. That said, you know, applicants often argue, "Well, so-and-so got a variance on similar facts," and they point out how it's similar in the following nine ways, and they say, "Well, you're bound by that." And if you... And you have to be concerned about that argument by applicants because it's made often, and that's usually what's brought up at Article 78s down the road. If there's a grant followed by a denial on another one, everyone's always looking to say, "Well, that's just like mine," even though the board might say it's not at all like yours. There's a thousand different things that make it different. They point to the thousand things that look like it's the same to them. So, it's a concern. It's a long way of saying, "You have a real concern, but each application does stand on its own." In regard to where does that leave everybody right now with your options? Again, I repeat that there's an awful lot that was discussed off the hearing record that ordinarily would be something that should be discussed on, you know, in the public hearing. It also sounds like there's an awful lot of things that the applicant has been given food for thought and has already considered, such as the permeable pavement and this rain garden concept, that both of which the applicant may say, "Look, I'm not interested in that." Both of which the applicant may say, "You know what? I'm very interested in that, and I would consider that." And some of which, i.e. the permeable pavement, may ultimately reduce, if it's feasible and he looks into it and is willing to consider it, it might well reduce that requested variance from 27% lot coverage down to some number below that, that might address some concern that had been expressed by certain members of the board on the substantiality of the variance. You know, that said, right now, we're dealing with a situation where the public hearing's closed, and you've got various options. I mean, one thing that you could do, it's in the same meeting, and I'm not saying you should, I'm not advocating, I'm just giving you... I gave you a range of options before, but to give you an additional option, you could reopen the public hearing tonight. You could vote to reopen it, and there's no prejudice to the applicant because he's here and he's been here the whole time. The only time you can't reopen it is if you... The applicant leaves and then you reopen it, and he's not here, and he's not on notice of the fact that you're going to continue discussing his application, and he doesn't have the ability to rebut things that are said. But he's here, and he's been here the whole time. So, in my legal opinion would be, if you were interested in doing that, you'd be within your right to do that. I know the applicant is here wanting to get a decision and is hoping to get an approval tonight. However, there's also a four-member board here that's expressing, at least two members of which have expressed some significant concern of the application in its current state. So, it's something to consider if you wanted to reopen the public hearing and have the applicant address these issues and come for the next meeting and then hear from the engineer if you need to on the rain garden idea or the permeable pavement idea, and see if the applicant can further reduce the need for the variance. That's something that you could do. You by no means have to do that. One other topic, again, just looking here and just calling it like I'm seeing it, I see some... I see a four-member board. I see two members expressing concerns. I don't know if that means they're headed towards a denial or an approval or not, or there's consensus that the board could reach or not. But so you know where you stand legally, if there's a motion to approve and the vote's 2-2, there's no action taken on it. There's a motion to disapprove, and it's 2-2. There's no action taken, which means that the board still has 62 days to render a decision. If it doesn't render any decision in 62 days, it's deemed denied. So, again, that may or may not be relevant to anything that anybody's thinking about, but just so you know, what happens here, that's the law. That's how it would work. So, again, that's... Those are the procedural orders. Those are my thoughts, if that helps anybody in the...
Guess we're still off the record with all those things. You consider doing those provisions, looking into them? And I mean, we'd still have to see how it works out, you know? I mean, you can't just say, "Hey, great," you know?
No, I wouldn't ever... I wouldn't pick up these literatures if I wouldn't consider it, and I wouldn't bring it up.
Right.
The reason I brought it up is because it's in my planning from beginning to do something like that. And since I live even with this, I kept on looking into that and studying these kind of things and trying to see where I can reuse and make it a comment.
Actually, he has a pound on this, like a handmade pound on this property. Just a nice pound with landscaping around it.
So...
But even, I mean, again, it could be a combination of things, but if that permeable pavement worked, you might get down below the 22, right, of the original one. So, that, to me...
From 22 to 27 is...
Right. But if, again, like, so the piece that I'm considering is, is that the only reasoning behind lot coverage that the planner established? Was it solely to control the amount of recharge?
Yeah, I mean, it's coverage by impervious material.
Right.
So, that's... That would be pervious.
Because if not...
The lot, I mean, all of a sudden, I mean, we wouldn't even be taking a... That just would not be counted anymore. So, it'd come off that percentage.
No, I know. But what I'm saying is, the purpose or the reasoning behind establishing that as the lot coverage? Was it established for the purpose, sole purpose of controlling the amount of runoff or recharge? And, you know, or were there other factors that we would need to consider to say?
Well, I think, I don't know. That might be something to check with Bonnie, but it's coverage by impermeable surfaces. So, if that's a... Can be considered, if a permeable driveway can be considered a permeable, impermeable surface, sorry.
Right.
If it's considered a permeable surface, then I would think, again, this is the discretion of the engineer, that it would come off the percentage.
My understanding is on permeable pavement, and it's been a while since I've seen an application using permeable pavement, but when I have seen it in the past, it's not 100% reduction in permeable. It's, I think, it's like 50% or some percentage because there is still, you know, it's still... It's pavement with dirt and, you know, with access to the soil below.
Got a lower percentage of runoff.
It's a lower percentage. Am I right? Is that what you're understanding?
No, I understand that, too. I think that's right. I will tell you what. I will more consider... I will consider both ways if that helps, but I will more, I think, to consider to go with the zero runoff on the whole roof. I know roughly how these things work. It's not for free, but there is some couple type of options to do that, above-ground and underground, and I believe that the attorneys between them will work out the best way on that. So, if that's considerable, so in that way, at least, we're taking care of additional 13% bringing down the lot coverage and the risk of to 14%, whereas less than the 15% required lot coverage. We know that it's a... You're not going to consider that at every application. This is, we have a reason behind. We have a history here where it's different than in others.
There's a long history of that, and it was even about to pass this board or the previous board, but it was a technical question that came up from one of the board members back then. And all these discussions and concerns was discussed already, and we came up by the last hearing with one big concern about the engineer to review, and now we have another part for him to review. So, that's about it. So, why should it be dragged around any even further? Because it's like we can do it on conditions, and we have to get the conditions enforced, and that's it.
But there's nothing... We based it, making the assumption that, you know, and I'm still not beyond the point that the lot coverage that was established by the planner, we're making the assumption that it was solely established to tend to the issue of recharge and runoff. I don't know that for a fact because I wasn't the one that developed the plan, and nor am I a planner. So...
I have one point...
I would presume that there's a host of planning issues that would lead to a decision to put a lot coverage limit, and it's... I would guess that it's certainly not confined to the water runoff issue. What it was, what all the factors were, I don't know, but I know that planners take into account a myriad of issues on all these things.
And that's one of the assumptions as well. So, if, yes, if the solutions that we're discussing now check the box on one of 20 factors that drives our decision in establishing that lot coverage, then that's not really... Not making much movement against that. So, that's one piece. And then, but, you know, the other piece is, if that was tabled for a second, and that wasn't even part of the equation, and this was, you know, it was... You made the assumption that the lot coverage is solely established to protect the amount of recharge or ensure the amount of recharge needed or runoff, and that what we're discussing now is the solution to accomplish that still? I would assume that there would have to be something, as David was saying, that is enforceable by the building inspector, that he... It's not left up to his interpretation, that, oh, there's a bucket underneath the gutter. That they have a, you know, they're tending to this issue.
Like an underground system, like...
Is some type, you know, like how, again, I'm not an engineer, but, you know, when there's diagrams here that are describing certain aspects of the lot, you know, the catch basin, you know, illustration, and, you know, the...
So, basically, it will be reviewed by the town engineer and added up to this plan as a detail on this plan that will be part of the condition.
Right.
That means a condition that has to be in the plan.
And I know we all want to move this thing along, right? And not, but like, that's not happening tonight. Like, that piece of it is not happening tonight for me to comfortably say, "Yes, it's here. I see it. It's something that is a black and white condition that we'd be able to approve." You couple that with the fact that I want to consult the town plan, you know, Bonnie. What's the spirit? And, you know, if these things are done, you know, is it accommodating the concerns over having that established lot coverage?
Yeah, I mean, based on what we know, I look at this, it sounds like the solutions are feasible, but I'm not the one to make that call. So, we would need to see, you know, see it laid out.
And look, again, just so everybody has eyes wide open, even if you were to do that, it may not sway any of the board members. It may sway some of them, it may sway all of them. It may change your opinion on some of the five factors, it may change none of your opinion on the five factors, if you saw that. And in that regard, by the way, I should add, I think, just to bring us back on track where we were before we got into this, you know, discussion, you guys, the board members were discussing the five factors, and I think you got up to formally number two, and I think you got into number three. Is the area variance substantial? I think there was some discussion on that, but I think that's as far as you got. So, if you wanted to, again, back procedurally, where are we right now? So, we move towards a conclusion to a long discussion. You could continue your discussion right now of the five factors, and then you could... Again, the motion to approve had been withdrawn, so right now, you're still in discussion of the five factors. One thing you could do is continue to discuss the five factors, complete that discussion right now based upon the current hearing record, not the discussion off the record, based upon the hearing record, and then entertain a motion to approve, entertain a motion to approve with conditions, entertain a motion to disapprove. Basically, we call for a motion. Whoever wants to make a motion can make one. If you wanted to not make, not do that, or if you had a motion and a second, then you could take a vote. And if it passes one way or the other, then you're done. If it's a 2-2, well, then there's been no action taken, and you just move forward towards the next meeting with the hearings still closed. Another option would be to vote to reopen the public hearing and have it open for further discussion, consistent with the off-the-record discussion that's been going on, and the applicant comes back in a month and discusses further issues, consistent with the discussion or otherwise. Those are your options. So, you're focused on terms of what you want to do right now.
That's what I favor of. This opening, again, I would...
Reopen it?
Yeah.
And put it into the record, the conditions?
That would be my preference.
What do you say, Seth?
Yeah, I mean, is it something that we can require is put into the plan for us to, you know? Because in the interim of being reopened, you know, I'd like to contact Bonnie, so I'm sure she has her info, right? So, I'd like to get her opinion. Now, does that need to be... Does she have to address something that's on the record? If it's... How does that...
Well, look, if you vote to reopen the hearing, it will be a motion to reopen the hearing right now. Is there a second? Yes. And if it passes, then the hearing is reopened. And then, you know, you could proceed the way you would have proceeded had the hearing never been closed, which is say, "Look, come back next month. You can go talk to Bonnie. You can invite Bonnie here to talk. You can get an informal opinion from Bonnie and then come back and report on the record what you learned and what you know. You can ask her for a letter and have her come in and give the letter." You don't have to do any of that. That's within your province, just like what anything else you would do, any other investigation, like, for example, what you did on the fire. You know, you had concern about whether the fire apparatus was safely, you know, could safely access the property on that matter, and you asked for a letter, and then you followed up with them, and that was reported on the record in the hearing, and then the hearing was closed, and that could be considered.
First, we're going to finish the five factors. Let's finish the five factors, and then we'll see what we're going to do.
Okay.
We're up to number three, we did it, right? Number four, whether the proposed variance will have an adverse effect or impact on the physical or environmental condition in the neighborhood or the district.
No. Well, barring the discussion that took place after the closed hearing, whether it was... So, we're not considering any of the solutions for runoff or recharge that were discussed outside of the hearing, right, David? So, to answer that question...
Yeah, I mean, you could talk about them, but you can't rely on them as the basis for your decision if it wasn't in the hearing record.
Right. That's what I'm asking procedurally. If the answer to that question has to come from...
The proposed variance we have...
What was on the public record?
Right.
Yeah, what was on the public hearing.
Then the concern lies in an impact to the amount of recharge that could be possible within that lot.
Okay. Number five, whether the alleged difficulty was self-created, which is yes.
Yeah.
I'm sorry, Chairman, was number four yes or no?
Yes. That's the... An impact to, you know, possible impact to...
Whether the proposed variance will have an adverse effect or impact on the physical or environmental conditions in the neighborhood or the district.
Again, keep in mind, the board, considering the five factors, does not have to come to a consensus on every factor, and it doesn't have to take a formal vote on every factor. They really need to take it into account and discuss it.
Yes.
And the board does that very well. It should be an open discussion, and everybody's got to, in the end, vote on the overall balancing test set forth in New York State town law, taking into account how everybody feels on those factors.
Okay. So, we're done with the five factors. I'll make a motion to vote on this tonight with conditions. The condition will be for the engineer to tell us if the septic is okay, if it has any impact on the neighboring well. And this next condition, the attorney says we can't really put into the condition, somehow
Yeah, yeah, because I can't make...
I understand.
Yeah.
So that's what I'm trying to say, if we open the public hearing, then we could discuss it and put it into the condition and then close it again.
I want to see what, what the plans are.
Oh, plans, yeah.
Yeah.
Oh, okay. Okay.
It sounds like it'll work, but I, you know...
We gotta see it on, on the paper.
But you'll, you'll have to understand, figure out, does that, is that going to be relevant to any of your five factors? That's, that's going to be the one of the things that you're considering and that's what your, your issue is in regard to Ms. Franson and the code and so forth.
I mean, I...
Does it make a difference to your, to your analysis of the five factors?
And if, you know, we evaluate, I mean, I, I'm going to reach out to her and see if she could be present for the next, you know, if not, at least offer a statement.
But it's not to say, what's the basis, what's the main factors in, in lock coverage?
Yeah, my, my thought process is if, if, if she says that's the primary reasoning behind maximum lock coverage and here's the solution to solve for, for that concern, you know, that's a very...
Given this situation, given the situation...
Then I, then I could proceed, you know, accordingly on that.
Right.
You know, but without, it, it, I think it begins, and it's up to you and your, your decision, you know, but like, if she says, oh, that's a small factor that I, you know, use to determine lock coverage, it may not even be worth going through the whole...
Yes, I understand what you're saying.
So, so let me address it procedurally again. So, so you began to make a motion, I don't think you finished the motion. Your motion was to approve, it started out to be, to approve, um, subject, subject to conditions and the first condition was going to be, uh, the engineer's approval of the, uh, the septic and leach field and so on.
Yeah.
And then that's when you got thrown off because you were going to put in a second condition in regard to the, uh, something in regard to the roof. So you have an option right now to, to leave your motion as is with just the one condition. You could add a second condition, um, whether or not it would be appropriate to impose a condition that's not supported by discussion on the record is something that a court would have to decide if anybody ever chose to challenge that. But, um, those are your options. You, you could, you could leave your motion with the one condition, you could add the second condition, uh, or you could withdraw the motion and do something else. Joe, yeah, Jonas' decision, it was his motion. He started speaking and he made a motion, so it's, it's up to him to act right now, one way or the other.
Whether he continues with the motion...
Give him to you again?
Thank you.
You still have an applicant to go.
We leave the motion, would have both things go on, both conditions.
Okay.
And if, but if the engineer approves the second motion, that could be considered.
Okay, so let's be clear. So the motion is to approve on the condition that, one, uh, the engineer approves the septic system and number two, that what, that, what, what's the second condition?
To have...
That the roof shall have zero runoff? That, that there should be some system attachment of...
System attached to the roof to, to accept the runoff, to make easier on the lock coverage.
If, if he makes a motion for, for, for vote on this, then my vote has to be made based off of the information I have now, right?
Yes.
Without, without the, the plan for the condition or the conversation with Bonnie?
I would like to know more about that second condition before I vote. Right now, right now, I...
That's what I'm asking, if, if a motion can be made while his motion is open.
Well, what you should do is, he, he, he's got a motion. There's been no second to the motion. So if, if that's the motion that he's stating and he's standing by that motion, he makes the motion and he calls for a second. If there's a second, then there's discussion and then there would be a call and a vote. Um, again, if you don't feel like you have sufficient information to pass, to vote in favor of that right now, you can vote no.
Right.
You can abstain, um, or you could vote in favor of it.
Vote in favor, right. So just procedurally, then, if, if, let's say, let's say it was like a tie, two to two.
Yeah, we're...
Right, right, I don't want to, but I'm, I'm just trying to work it out.
Yeah.
And then there's the 60-something days. In that time period, if we get additional information, does it come up for a re-vote? I mean, how, what, how, how does that work?
Well, no, yes and no, okay? If, if the vote, if there's a motion and there's a second and, and the vote is two-two, there's been no action taken on it. The, the motion hasn't passed and the board simply hasn't acted. And so you're back to where you were, where you've got 62 days to make a decision. If, if there's further information that comes before the board, unless the public hearing is reopened, it's irrelevant, okay?
Right.
But, again, anybody else's is, in the absence of reopening the public hearing and getting more information, somebody else can make another motion.
David, David, let's start. I'm gonna withdraw the, the motion and I'll make a motion to reopen the public hearing. Would that be all in favor?
Second.
All in favor?
Aight.
Okay, the public hearing will be reopened and we'll come back next month. That's done.
So, so, so what we're...
I'm a little confused right now, but that's besides the point. Okay, so we withdrew the motion to approve.
Yes.
You made a motion to reopen the public hearing and Bob seconded.
Seconded.
Okay, and everybody was all in favor.
Yes.
So they will return next month, but in the meantime, we need to get answers from Mark and we want to reach out to Bonnie?
Yeah, yeah, I'd like to see if she could be in attendance for the next one.
I can ask.
Yeah, and if not, if you can let me know her response, in that way I could see if she'll provide some input to this outside of...
Well, if you tell me exactly what you need from her, I can draft an email to her, include all of you on it and then...
I'll get with you on that. And as far as the, right, because if, if the purpose of the public, like, let's not like be coy around anything, the purpose of the public hearing is to provide additional information for the board to make a, to come to a decision.
That's right.
And, and for the public and for the applicant to address as well.
Okay, so basically the public hearing is not open, so I can start my speech again now.
So, so, so one of the things that I'm, you know, I'm expressing an opinion on that I'd like to see is...
On paper.
Updated plans.
Something on a plan, dated plans, right? Illustrating the exact solution that, that we were...
I know, I know Mark Hatzl is away and he will be back at the end of this week or...
I think he's...
Back tomorrow?
I think.
Next week we have the holidays, I will still try to meet him this week if I can to go over with him his concerns and so I have time to fix it, submit it on time to the board and...
Right, because the next board meeting is April 24th.
Yep.
And the submission date is April 3rd, which is in the middle of your holiday, I understand that.
Right.
So I will, I can extend if it's okay with the board...
Yes.
To extend it to the following week.
Thank you.
For his submission because it's during the holiday.
We'll try our best. Basically, I will count, try to contact Mark.
So if you can get it in by the 10th, I'll give you next week.
It's very important if I can meet Mark still this week before the holiday, that way I can...
I can find out.
Okay, thank you.
Okay, so we're done with this case, right?
Next month.
We'll see you next month.
I'm still here.
Oh, yes.
You can get to the...
No, but I will not hold you off on this next month. I think, I think we can just move that over to the next month. There's no, there's no scheduled, public hearing scheduled. There is a little bit similar situation, but a different, a whole different thing.
We'll talk about it next month, please.
Yeah, let me, let me work on that and get some more background on this project, on the next one.
You're moving right with to next month?
Yes.
Okay.
Okay.
Number four is the, to approve the November minutes, you have it here?